Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the school committee for March 25th. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to note that this meeting is being recorded for, well, recorded and streamed live, but also for rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9, Wednesdays and Thursdays at 5:00, Fridays at 6:00 a.m., Saturday 8:00 a.m., Sundays at 2:00, also on Channel 18, DCTV Channel 18, on Mondays and Saturdays noon and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. We have a public hearing for the school, proposed fiscal year '25 school budget. It has been advertised in the Standard Times, I think it was March 18th edition of the Standard Times. That is set to open at 6:05. We've got four minutes, so I'm going to ask my colleagues if we could move the minutes up for approval. I would entertain a motion for the regular session minutes of March 11th.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Mr. Nunes. Any discussion on that motion? No? Oh, got it. Forget all that. Roll call, Kate.
Kathleen Amorall?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin?
Here.
Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
John Nunes?
Yep.
I haven't touched that either.
I think I, this is my, right, my last, no, my, one more meeting where you have to deal with me. So we have a motion, Mr. Oliver, a second by Mr. Nunes, no discussion, so I will say all in favor. Aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I will, actually, I will abstain because I was not here.
One abstention. Passes for one.
Four zero one.
Four zero one. Thank you. And since we have three minutes left before we can open up for the public hearing on the school budget, I want to take a moment to recognize one of my colleagues on the school committee. This is her last meeting. I do see a little bit of a grin. And so everyone at this table sort of came together. We have a certificate for you for your elected years in office. We won't revisit that history, but Ms. Jenkins stepped up and was appointed prior to that election. And we have a little something for you behind this certificate, so make sure not to...
Oh, thank you.
Throat out.
Thank you.
I think you'll like what's in the envelope underneath.
Thank you.
And if I may, I just want to say that it's been an honor to serve with you. We've been through some difficult times and you have served with conviction and an unwavering commitment to the students and the educators of this district. You've had, you know, that focus on transparency, health equity over these years, transparency around all the wonderful contributions that our parent organizations and other volunteers in this district have put toward bringing in a lot of money that allows our kids to experience extracurricular activities and field trips and those sorts of things. And you have just been incredibly unwavering in your stance. And you've brought to us your background as a political science major and a professor, Dr. Jenkins. And you have stood firm in those, and it's been an honor to witness that. And that's what I have to say. I'll turn it over to my colleagues for the last minute or so if they have anything additional to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't believe it's been almost 10 years, Shannon. It's been a while. So yeah, I will echo a lot of what Kathleen said. I've enjoyed our time together. I think we've got a lot, we've gotten a lot accomplished. You and I have never, we didn't always see eye to eye on some issues, and on a lot of issues we did. And we were able to move, in my opinion, be able to move the district forward. So I learned a lot from you, and I thank you for serving, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. So, thank you for serving.
And I didn't have that much time with you a year, but I've learned a lot from you and I wish I could learn a lot more from you. But you're a huge asset to this committee, and I will miss you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of echo what my colleagues have said. Most of the time you and I don't agree. And every once in a while, you know, part of my pun, hell freezes over because we do agree on something type of deal. But I have always, and I mean this in all seriousness, admired your conviction. You take a stance, and that's where you're going to stand, irregardless of what happens. And I admire you and I applaud you for that. It has been a privilege to serve on this committee, to call you a friend and a colleague, and wish you and Doug and your family much happiness and enjoyment. And, you know, if you have nothing better to do on a Monday night, you know, we stream live on YouTube now, so we're wherever, so, you know, my computer skills. So somewhere, somewhere out in space, there's, you know, the channel is there, so, you know, take a look and watch. So, but again, all the best.
Thank you.
Excellent. So now we're past the time and we can open up.
So I just want to say one thing. I want to say thank you to everyone here at the table, but also people who've served in the past. I've served for almost 10 years on this committee. I've served, we were reminiscing about other roles on the Finance Committee and the Budget Review Committee. I can say almost to a T that every single person that I've worked with, I know on this committee, but also in this town, volunteers their time because they believe they want to make this town, these schools, a better place. I'm proud of this committee. I'm going to get all teary. I shouldn't have done this up at the beginning. But I'm proud of this committee because we do disagree a lot. And I think we're a real example of what it takes to get along in these polarized times because we all show up to the table to do the work. And I think if we all in this community show up to do the work, we'll make this community a better place. So I encourage other people to volunteer their time, to get involved, to do what it takes to help continue to make the Dartmouth schools and the town of Dartmouth a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I ask that if anyone has any comment specific to the proposed school budget, we have a new setup here in the middle of the room. If you could come up to the, to that microphone, state your name, and try to keep your comments brief. Don't all run up at once.
Good evening. My colleague and I, Jodi Perici and Aviara, we were hoping some other folks would step up this evening and greet you and let you know that, though we do appreciate the hard work that you've done to try to balance the upcoming FY '25 budget, that it's not a done deal. We haven't lived through it yet. We have to get through the end of the year and see if riffing is actually going to happen, find out what our class sizes are going to be like for the upcoming year. We say right now that we're not cutting anyone, but we know that we're losing folks to attrition. That means people that are leaving, going elsewhere, people that are retiring. It's disappointing right now, I'll tell you, that the town people aren't concerned. It's disappointing that the townspeople are saying, okay, well, they had money for school choice. They put it aside, and now they're going to use that as a Band-Aid for fiscal '25 because fiscal '26 is going to be even worse, and we're not going to have that money, those monies aside. So our concern is that the town's going to become a little bit complacent because we've been able to sort of fix it here, and excuse us when we say "we", but we do appreciate Dr. Saban Maguire's willingness and Mr. Kylie's willingness to having these conversations with us. But we would like everyone in town and you folks to also just please keep in mind that we know enrollment has been, has dropped townwide at each of the grade levels or, you know, the elementary, middle, and high. But right now, what it looks like is that the losses due to attrition are losses of staff members that work directly with students, and that scares us because we do recognize that children have much higher needs than they have in the past. But looking back 20 years, just when we opened this school building, actually, the ratio to administration, administration-student ratio was much different than it is now. Recognizing that there are increased needs everywhere, we just ask you to please take care in thinking about the number of positions that get cut that, in which we have students that will be directly impacted. We know we have needs. We know we need a behaviorist, and we appreciate that being kept in the budget. We hope that we can fill all the ESP positions. But we're just sitting here a little downhearted, and I imagine some of you folks are as well because we've been able to kind of hopefully get through this year. We'll know at the end what really happens. You know, we know Dartmouth Public Schools financially isn't where it needs to be, and next year is going to hurt much harder than this one is right now, and this one's painful for us. Our members are very concerned. They come to us, what's going to happen, you know, seniority riffing, et cetera. So we do thank you for your time, and if we're a little long, at least we ate up the few minutes that were here to be offered.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I know, you know, the positions that we're planning on cutting, and it's supposed to be worse next year, so I don't know where else you can cut. The class sizes will just keep getting bigger, and that is a huge concern because when we say an average class size of 21, we know that it's not all nice and neat, and every class is going to have 21 students. It could be some grade levels where class sizes are 18 and some where class sizes are 25, 26. So it's concerning. And when we hear that it's going to keep looking worse moving forward, we're even more concerned, so. But again, we do definitely appreciate the transparency, the conversations that you have had with us. So hopefully we can come together and do the right thing in this town.
Thank you.
So we don't have to come back up. We know that it's a public comment shortly. And Dr. Jenkins, thank you for everything. We appreciated the conversations. It's been a good number of years that we've had, you know, back and forth, and we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like... I would, looks like nobody's rushing to the microphone.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we close the public hearing for the FY '25 school year budget.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will, we're back in open session. And just again, for just a second, if anyone wants to come up to speak to any matter that is on the agenda, in addition to, you know, not the budget, but any other items on the agenda, please step forward, and I'll wait an awkward couple of seconds to see if anyone rushes to the microphone. Hearing none. Great. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Saban Maguire to introduce the most exciting part of, positive part of this agenda.
I know. I would say that looking out at the number of people that are here in our audience, to, audience, I'm calling it an audience because that's what it feels like. But the number of people that are here this evening to celebrate our DeMello children is really heartening. So I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I looked through the PowerPoint that they're going to be presenting, and it's gym-packed. So I'm not sure I can give an adequate preview, but I'm going to invite the principal, Ms. Correa, up to the microphone, and I think we have a great presentation ahead.
Well, hello, and thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to spotlight our wonderful DeMello School and our students. We are really very excited to share everything with you this evening. The ultimate spotlight is on our students over there, but before we can bring them up, we would like to, an opportunity to talk to you about what we've been doing at DeMello School. So connection has always been an overarching focus for us at DeMello School, and this year is following in suit. We know that we all learn through connection, through connecting with others. And at DeMello, we have been learning through connecting to one another in our classrooms this year, across grade levels, and throughout the community. Oops. I never, I think I did this last year. I just talked past all the slides. All right. So I'm going to start off by just talking about, one of our focuses for this year was to connect cultures and families throughout the building. So for years, we've upheld the belief that DeMello School is a place of windows and mirrors. What we mean by that is that we want our students to see themselves reflected in the lessons they learn, the activities they participate in, the books they read. We also want to provide our students with windows through which they may learn about others. Last fall, we hung up this world map that you see displayed on the slide presentation on a bulletin board at the entrance of our building with a simple note asking families that were there for open house or for assemblies to pin a place anywhere in the world that they had connection to. And it was great because some people pinned places in the United States where their friends were. A lot of people pinned places that they had loved ones, that they were connected to, their families of origin. Some people pinned places that they visited on vacation. And we used all of the pins to focus on the areas that, around the world, that people had connections to and kind of interweave those places throughout the DeMello School this year. So as a school, we used all those locations on the map to kind of focus our school-wide Read Aloud. So at DeMello School, we put out what started as a weekly Read Aloud, it's more like every other week now, that we record and we share with classrooms throughout the building. And sometimes the Read Alouds just focus on good character traits and stories with great theme, and a lot of them incorporate some cultural aspects. So in looking at that map, we've been able to bring a lot of Read Alouds that reflect the maps, the pinned areas. And these are just a few. Cokey in the City is about a little boy who moves from Puerto Rico to the mainland. The Arabic Quilt is about a little girl who's the children of Egyptian immigrants. And American Desi is about a girl who's in between her Indian culture and her American culture. And through those Read Alouds, we have, give teachers time to pause the video and really talk about the characters, talk about all kinds of things. But we love honoring our students from different places around the world who are connected to different places, I should say, through those Read Alouds. We also took a look at the pinned areas on that map to bring cultural programs to DeMello School this year. Just not too long ago, we had Len Cabral, who is a well-known storyteller from the area, who came and delighted our students during the day with storytelling from the Caribbean and African folktales. And then he put on a wonderful family night for our DeMello families to enjoy those stories. We also had local author Janet Costa Bates with us earlier this year, who, she's from, I think she's from the Dartmouth area. Initially, she definitely has Dartmouth family because she bumped into a family member in our building quite unexpectedly. But she's a very successfully published author who writes about children of color, focuses a lot on Cape Verdean culture and Portuguese culture. And she came to our school and did writer's workshops with our students on creating characters. And, I don't know if you can see this in the slide, gave them a little Portuguese lesson as well. So another way that we are connecting with families and culture is our DeMello Family Wall. We have one bulletin board, soon to be two in the building, dedicated to recognizing our diverse and wonderful DeMello families. We try to catch pictures of them whenever in there, in the building. We took a lot of these at open house, but also at Student of the Month assemblies. Anytime we can get a family in front of a green screen, Mrs. Vossi, our wonderful instructional tech coach, who you hear a lot more about this evening, takes a picture, prints it, and it goes on the wall. And I have to say that when students, it's, the bulletin board is in a hallway that's pretty heavily traveled by our students. And you see students all the time stopping and looking at everyone with their families. And they point out their families, but then they point out their friends' families. And it's such a source of joy and pride that they take in this, in this bulletin board. This is actually an idea that we had years ago at the DeMello School that we've actually seen through. It was a pre-COVID dream that couldn't be done with masks on, and here we are. We focused this year on putting this together, and every time we have a gathering, we add more pictures. And it's just, no one passes by it without a smile. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hill to talk about classrooms.
Hi, everybody. Adam Hill, Assistant Principal of DeMello School. So yeah, in terms of connecting to the classrooms, we're going to share a little bit about our Grade 2. They put together a STEM challenge with, again, our wonderful tech coach Liz Vossi. And the STEM challenge for this one, it was during the wintertime, and it had a winter theme. So parents were invited in, and teams, grade-level teams for Grade 2, they developed their own town. And what they did with that town is they added cotton balls as a way to simulate snow. And then using a B-bot, which is like a small little robot, they then programmed that robot to then navigate throughout the town. So a really neat STEM challenge they all work collectively on. It was a really special day for everyone and families as well. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Heather real quick.
So I get to talk to you about the best part of DeMello School, which is recess. You know, you ask the kids what their favorite subject is, and they say recess. So I think we should just change curriculum and make it a, you know, recess a curricular. But I have the best room in the, in the whole school because I get a prime seat to what recess looks like. And a couple of years ago, we were noticing there was a lot of dysregulation around recess, primarily because people were making up their own lines, and, you know, the goal would move, and somehow the person who was supposed to be the referee then shot the goal, and then the other team's ahead. So we, we believed that. We wanted to restructure it. So one of the ways we did that was applying for a DEF grant. And thank you to the DEF for, you know, giving us somebody to help us out. And we had a couple of things we wanted to do, and it started with these three fields. So football, I don't know about any other school, but NFL has a great history, future ahead with the kids that are playing at DeMello. So the first thing you'll see is a miniature football field. The second field you see is a smaller practice field. And what we found with that was we were bringing kids that maybe didn't know how to play so well soccer as part of the big, large group. And we started doing drills with a student teacher we had. And kids were coming that would never have played. Kids were coming that didn't think that they were good enough to be on that big soccer field, and it really brought that connection back. And then we have that big soccer field, too. So on top of that, we have rules in the making that we're going to be zip-tying to wherever we can zip tie them, as well as working very hard with DHS to try and get, and Mr. Christopher Lee, to get some athletes to come and be part of our recess time, and then hopefully branch out to theater and music programs so that every kid has someone to look up to. And something that Mr. Shea had said when we sat down is about connecting our communities and having our kids look up to someone at the high school and having them see what it could be like to be a kid in that place, and really pushing our way to staying here and being part of our community. So these are our structured recess games. You should come and see it. It's really awesome.
Thank you. Oh, here they are. More pictures here. All right, soccer and football. Okay, continuing on with connecting, oh, this is you.
That's me.
Oh, sorry.
That's me. So I'm going to just move on and talk about how we connect at DeMello School across grade levels. So another way that we learn through connection at DeMello is by bringing kids together from different grade levels in different capacities. So last year, we spotlighted our STEM Fridays at our DeMello Spotlight at School Committee, and we featured our instructional technology coach, Mrs. Vossi, who came up with the idea after COVID that kids needed to... who came up with the idea after COVID that kids needed to kind of come together, work through problems together, and kind of reconnect. And STEM Fridays, if you ever come to DeMello School, and we invite everybody always to come to DeMello School. But if you ever come on a Friday afternoon, you will see the cafeteria filled with students, first graders, third graders, fifth graders, everything in between, working on STEM challenges that never get old, that are always super exciting. And we see that, you know, not only are our kids working in STEM, in science, technology, engineering, and math, but they're working on the soft skills that are so important that, you know, not many people really talk a lot about, but are super important, not just for our students, but for every human being. So you can walk into a STEM Friday and watch our kids connecting while they're working on their communication skills. They're working on compromise, being adaptable, just being overall, you know, kind and respectful to each other. So we feel like we get a lot out of a small chunk of a Friday afternoon. I know there are teachers here probably nodding, saying it's the best day of the week for them also, in a lot of cases because the energy in that room is palpable and the learning is fantastic. But you'll learn just a tiny bit more about STEM teams at the end of this presentation. So we also like to connect students to one another across grade levels through buddy classes. So we have a long tradition at DeMello School of getting kids together to read to each other. You're looking at a buddy day that we just had recently where the big kids and the little kids got to sit and read for a half an hour at the end of the school day. But they also work on projects together across classrooms. And I've never heard anyone not say anything wonderful about the time they spend with the buddy class. The kids, the smaller kids look up to the older kids and think that they're so wonderful. And the older kids are thoroughly delighted at working with the smaller kids. So everybody wins, just like in STEM teams. We also have very, very strong student councils at DeMello School, made up of role models who serve the DeMello School, its neighbors, and the surrounding community. So this year, what you see in this picture is our fourth-grade student council, which is a rather large group of students, led by Mrs. Baker and Mrs. Marky. And this group has partnered with Gifts to Give in New Bedford on doing athletic equipment drives. So we wanted to put footballs and soccer balls and basketballs and other equipment into the hands of students around the region who might not have access to those things otherwise. So that was a fall initiative that our fourth-grade student council took on, engaging the whole school in bringing those donations in and making sure that they got delivered to the students who needed it most in the region. Our fourth-grade student council has also spent quite a bit at the Council on Aging next door to DeMello School. They were there last week for some chit-chat and some crafts. But the big deal is they are soon returning to do some line dancing with some seniors at the Council on Aging. And I'm personally hoping to get to witness some boot scooting among our students as well as our staff. So stay tuned. I'm hoping that we can bring pictures in some form of that event. Our fifth-grade student council, under the guidance of our fifth-grade teachers, Mrs. Kolbeck, Ms. Farias, Mrs. Aguiar, and Mrs. Olean, has also been very busy this year with school-wide drives to support South Coast families in need. And these wonderful cherubs also take care of all of our recycling in the building, for which we're very, very thankful. And finally, we connect across grade levels with all of our wonderful DeMello assemblies that bring us together for celebrations and fun. This is a picture of one of our favorite all-time assemblies organized by Mr. Hill, our holiday sing-along, which took place right before our holiday break in December, with the help of our music teacher, Mrs. Solemy, and our instructional tech coach, there's a theme here, Mrs. Vosie. We had an entire school, staff included, singing out holiday songs one after another. Honestly, what seems like such a simple event spreads so much joy across the building. We look forward to doing more of them. But we are not done talking about connection at DeMello School. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Hill to talk about how we connect to the community.
All right. So connecting with the community, DeMello has had the wonderful opportunity of connecting with the Dartmouth YMCA, as well as the Lead Educator for Sharing of the Harvest, Sarah Liederman. And here, we had the opportunity with the support of our PTO and parent volunteers. We were able to build two planter boxes. We had soil donated from Ace Hardware across the way. And we also had wildflowers that were donated. So we created our very own pollinator garden. And this is, and continues to be, a great way for us to get our hands dirty as we connect with our science curriculum standards. So this was really great for everybody. Continuing on, we held a really special Arbor Day ceremony at DeMello where we included Eversource and the Dartmouth Tree Committee. So many community members came to join us, including the tree warden. And here, what we did is, again, working in conjunction with Eversource, our fifth-grade student council researched trees that were being donated from Eversource. And so the trees that were donated were swamp oak, a red bud, and a black gum tree. Fifth grade did a wonderful job of researching those trees. And then fourth grade read poems, just talking about trees in general in Arbor Day. And those trees are standing strong today, and we're thrilled to see them grow. And we're also looking forward to continuing our partnership with Eversource and the Dartmouth Tree community to turn this Arbor Day ceremony into an annual ceremony. In addition, we work with the New Bedford Child and Family Services. And this has been a longstanding fifth-grade tradition where fifth-grade classrooms reach out to the New Bedford Child and Family Support Services to adopt a family in need around the holidays. Our teachers, you know, we don't know the families except for what they might need. And this picture here is a picture of our students wrapping. So this is an opportunity for them to get involved in wrapping the gifts that have been donated. And then our teachers will then coordinate with the Child and Family Services to deliver the presents to the warehouse, something that's very special. And then, lastly, we also work with the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra. This has been very special for us. They typically will come contact us and let us know what their objective is for the year. And generally, they connect with both math or science standards. And in this case, the objective was animal locomotion. So in this picture here, it's a whole-school assembly. We all get to listen. It's very interactive, very entertaining. But then we dwindle it down. So they work specifically with our third and fifth-grade classrooms. Again, we're trying to tie in which standards match the grade level the best. And there, they went into each classroom, and children had the opportunity to create their own music tied to animal locomotion. And then as a way to wrap it up and put it all together, our third and fifth-grade classrooms were invited to the New Bedford High School, where the entire symphony presented for us all. And it was just really neat for everyone to see. So great opportunities for us to connect with the community.
And last but not least, here it comes. We're going to talk a little bit about how we connect with everyone at DeMello School. And that is through our DeMello School newspaper, our student newspaper, The Howler. And our mascot is a wolf, if you're wondering where the Howler name came from. Very clever. Here is a picture of the students that you see back there. This is our newspaper staff. So this is a group of fifth-grade students who decided that the school community needed a student-created publication to connect us all. The Howler staff is led by fifth-grade teacher Jasmine Olean, who guides and supports these young writers as they get curious about the people and events of our school. They publish their electronic newspaper just about every month. And I'll be honest, I learn something new about DeMello and the people in it every time I read one. Tonight's spotlight was inspired, really, by this group who recently got curious about what students loved most about our school. And here is some of what these young journalists found out. Okay, can we cue it up, Mr.? Uh-oh. I don't see the video. There's supposed to be a video. Oh, no. Mrs. Vosie, our instructional tech coach is going to be sad right now. If that's okay, because we're going long and we've got to, we want them to come up. But they, what they did was they spent about two weeks interviewing students from grades one through five about what they loved about DeMello School and what they really appreciated about how we connect as a school. And I promise, if we can't show it now, we will show it, we'll share it with the whole town and everyone. We'll ask Chad Amaral to put it out on DCTV on a loop, and we'll be good. I'm going to, I'm going to move on.
Is this the next question?
No, it was that heart. That's the start of the video. I promise it was there. That's fine. Nope, there's a video in it. I'm going to keep talking. Jonathan has told me to keep talking. I'm going to keep talking. So actually, that was a five-minute video. And maybe we would be going on a little bit too long if we did that and what we don't want to do next. But what I would love to do is to bring our newspaper staff to, and Mrs. Olean, to the podium so that they can tell you what they love about DeMello School and why they felt it was important to start a school newspaper. Howlers have special T-shirts with their names on them so that we don't have to introduce everybody. Just kidding. We're going to bring everyone up who's answering the first question about what we love about DeMello School first. And you can introduce yourself. I think we're going to wait on a little microphone. Right. Yeah, that's it. All right. So what do the Howlers love most about DeMello? We're going to start with Mackenzie.
My name is Mackenzie. I love all the fun activities at DeMello School. And when kids have a hard time making friends, STEM teams can for sure help with that. Because it teaches about leadership, teamwork, and much more. STEM teams stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. Also, what makes me feel connected to DeMello School is when we had the storyteller. And when we had buddy reading. And when we had buddy reading.
Hi, my name is Bella. And what I love most about DeMello School is I love how the teachers go out of their way to help you. And if you struggle on anything, they're happy to help. And I also like if you can't, if you're having a hard time making a friend, STEM teams can help form a new friendship.
Hi, my name is Liam. And what I love most about DeMello School is how, is how we connect with everybody and the STEM teams. And everybody was like, like if somebody at recess is on the buddy bench because they don't have a friend to play with, some kids go up right away and help them and have them join into their game and just have them play. And then they become friends and they just connect.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. And what I love most about DeMello School is how it makes me feel connected to everyone. And it's just, I love being with my friends and the teachers. And everyone here is so kind. And if somebody needs a friend, STEM teams help.
Hi, my name is Ariane. And for what made us want to create a newspaper was to help everyone connect through all of DeMello School and even like parents outside of school and the committee. And it helps people know what's going on in the school and what they can help with or what can help change our community and make it better.
Hi, my name is Emma. And when I started the newspaper, I was really into journalism. Like, it's something I wanted to see. But as I got more into it, I realized it's more than that. It's also a way to connect with all the students and make new friends. And it's really great. And like, thank you, the teachers, for helping us build this. It's so great.
Hi, my name is Ruby. And I wanted to create the DeMello Newspaper because I thought it was really cool to learn about the school and like, learn about our teachers. And it's a great way to like, make friends. And it's fascinating. And I like writing. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Samara. And I joined the Howler Newspaper because I wanted to help bring our school community together. I love it when everyone works together as a community. And it's really fun to learn about everyone in Spotlight. And I love telling everybody about what happened through the happenings.
And last but certainly not least, we wanted to bring the faculty advisor to the Howler Newspaper up. This is Jasmine Olean.
Hello, how are you? So the newspaper has really taken on a life of its own, but it is truly student-driven. They, we had like a bunch of different ideas, spotlight and happenings. And they started coming up with like book recommendations. They've done Would You Rathers. They've done historical facts. Our current issue is February/March, and there's inspiring quotes for Black History Month. And one thing that they've done is they go and they spotlight, and they go to different staff members. They choose which staff members to highlight. They started with the custodian monitors for lunch and recess. They've made sure that they've done all the grades. They've hit grade one through five. They've interviewed Mrs. Coria. And it is true, we've learned so much about the different staff members. But they include a fun fact. They came up with the questions to ask. And I think that they've, I mean, they will do work on their own time. I've asked them, like, because we have deadlines, and I've asked them to, you know, can you work on this article as opinion pieces? And they have, we have comics in there. And they have done everything I've asked them to do. They've missed recess time. And even one of those beautiful days to go out. And they've worked on them at home. And they've collaborated together. They've had to compromise. They've had to kind of edit down their work. We're so used to having, you know, edit, like, by adding more, revising and adding more detail. But they've actually had to like, cut it down because it has to fit into the template. So they've done such an amazing job, and I am so proud of them. We have students from every classroom, and it's varying students of levels. And they just bring so much. And we really are like, it's a fabulous community. So I'm very lucky to be surrounded by such wonderful people, by such smart and caring people. And I really appreciate where I am. So thank you.
I've been instructed to keep talking. So I, I have such love for the DeMello School, such love for every student in the building, and such love for our teachers and staff who come to school every day, game on, what are we going to do today? And I appreciate them all. So while I'm waiting for this video to queue up, I do want to say that we would be nothing without our students. And we would be nothing without the wonderful adults in that building that light the way for them every day. So thank you. I do have copies of the Howler, color copies for the school committee. And Sophia is going to come around and pass them out. And it's really okay if you can't get that going.
What do you love about DeMello School?
I like doing Field Day because I like sports a lot.
Do you have a favorite activity we do at Field Day?
I like the relay race.
Yeah.
I like that we get to use Chromebooks and we get to do Gigi and Epic and Starfall.
I love how we do read alouds.
What do you like about the read aloud?
I like how they're about different stories and they teach you a lot about persevering.
Have you learned anything from any of the books you've read so far?
Uh, yeah. I think I learned that you could do things that might seem impossible and it's always good to persevere.
I like that we get to have choice time at the end of the day and that our teachers help us with work.
I like, I really like STEM teams.
When STEM teams, when we have STEM teams, we're always creative.
Do you like working together with older students, younger students, kids in different grades?
Um, my favorite part is, would rather be choice time, STEM teams, or recess?
Yeah, STEM teams.
Mine is gym.
I like to do like gym and I like to do the Student of the Month because it helps other people.
First one is, what do you love about DeMello School?
Um, I love when we get to hang out with our friends and learn new stuff every day.
Anything else?
Um, there's one thing that I like doing. It's, it's um, when we do writing, we get to learn about our stuff. We get, we got to bring our toys and we got to share them with our partners.
Well, I can, I really like it because there's a lot of nice people there and there's like a whole bunch of my friends and I really, really respect them. And the teachers, they always like stand by you and they're always gonna like back you up if something's gonna happen.
What do you guys love about DeMello School?
I really like the STEM teams.
Okay, so you got, so you guys all agree that you love STEM teams. What's your favorite part about STEM teams?
Like the crew.
Seeing my friends and to do another month.
All right, what's your favorite thing that we do like together?
Um, like writing.
Okay. Like what do you like about writing?
Um, that sometimes we do partner writing. And I like that we get to make new stories every time we finish one.
First one is, what do you love about DeMello School?
Um, I really like that, like, everybody is nice and the teachers are really helpful and caring to all the students.
Okay.
Um, how like at recess and like you can make friends like every year, even if you're not like in one of your like friends' class, you can make new friends easily. Everybody's so calm.
Um, I like STEM teams. And I like the mad scientist because he helps me like learn a lot about science and I don't really get to do that.
What I like about DeMello School is that everybody is inclusive and we have three rules, which is respectful, responsible, and safe. And the last reason is that I like the storyteller because he's pretty funny and I like his stories a lot. And everybody is inclusive and he just is pretty cool.
Um, I love how we get to learn new things every day and we get to learn like math, science, social studies, and we get to learn a lot of new things in it.
Student council. A lot of people at recess can play letter games and I feel like it makes a bunch of people bond together. And there's a lot of friendly things there.
So my favorite part of DeMello School is when like they have the sing-alongs for the Christmas sing-along. I really like that because it's like every single kid like singing along to like all these songs. And I just really like it.
What's your favorite STEM team?
One of my favorite things about DeMello School is how we get to do STEM teams. We're like able to meet new people. And it's fun because we're able to like learn about each other without being in the same class as them. And there, when you have like a younger buddy than you, then it gives you a responsibility to help them out and like be there for them if they need anything. And when they have, and when you have an older buddy, then they're there for you.
I love how everybody is always nice to each other and they always include each other.
Can you give us an example about how they're nice to each other?
Like if somebody's always like on the buddy bench, they always include each other.
Mr. Galishah, that was worth the wait. I love tech problems because it makes me feel needed and wanted. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So we will shuffle off unless you have questions for our Howler group. Turn over to my colleagues. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things. Number one, ladies and gentlemen, fantastic job. I look forward to reading this. I appreciate it, I appreciate your comments. Watching the video was an excellent job. It's nice to see that the main thing that kind of came out of this is everybody talking about STEM, science, and, and that's, you know, that's fantastic to, to see and to Ms. Carrier and Mr. Hill. Len Cabral's still at this, huh? He's been doing this for a lot of years. So it was great, great to see that he was there again. I remember him being there a number of years ago. So, but, you know, thank you very much. It was a fantastic presentation, I enjoyed it.
Thanks, I thought you all did a great job. I was particularly impressed in the video how your journalism skills, when someone gave you just a brief answer, many of you asked some follow-up questions in a inviting way to get more information. You did a really great job. And I also love, you know, my kids went to DeMello and way back when, one of my kids wrote a letter to the principal, which led to a fourth grade talent show, which I don't know if you still do that. So, yeah, pre-COVID. But it, what impresses me is about how continually the leadership of the school listens to students and allows students to drive their own learning. Because we know when they are in that ownership position and they're, they're doing that work guided by adults is when they really get engaged and learn. So, great job by students, you're doing a great job. I too look forward to reading this and also to our staff. It's been awesome.
Great job, every single one of you. I'm impressed with how many of you are involved in the newspaper and how many are involved in the council and how much everybody likes STEM. And I'm wondering, have we crunched the numbers? Does it turn out that no child is sick on Fridays? Anyway, thank you all, hard work. It shows, great.
Yeah, I love the whole presentation. I love to hear all about DeMello and the happenings and, you know, the garden, the pollinator garden that was created and all the different aspects that was spoken about. But I really love how all of you had the courage to come up and speak to this crowd here, some of, probably some of your family members, as well as in front of all these TVs, these TV cameras and for everyone watching at home. So you should all give yourselves a pat on the back because you all did a fabulous job speaking this evening. And I just love to hear that we, that we have a, we have a newspaper over at DeMello. I'm looking forward as well to, to catch it up on the latest happenings there. So I thank you all so very much.
I mean, I can't really, there's nothing more I can say. It was fantastic presentation, fantastic to hear all of you come up and share what you've been doing and what you love about your school community. Two of my three children also went through the DeMello School. So it's exciting to see the, you know, the passion and the engagement with students. And so I really, my, my colleagues said it all, I don't know if anyone has anything else to add.
I do, I have to just say how impressed that I was. And, you know, there were a couple of themes that I heard that I just want to talk about that I think are important. And that's, I heard you talk a lot about friends and teachers. And I have to say, hearing you speak directly to those two themes really tells a lot about the culture of your school. And you are student leaders and please believe that your voice matters. I loved hearing you talk about the buddy bench and finding different ways to make those connections. And kudos to your teachers, to your principal, to your assistant principal. I know a lot of work goes into this. But what I could hear when you were interviewing the other children in your school was that they were echoing what you were saying. And so I often come here to school committee and talk about how wonderful the students are and wonderful the schools are in Dartmouth. And you just did such a wonderful job highlighting the amazing students and staff and the things that are happening in the, in the Dartmouth schools. I couldn't have said it any better myself. And Mr. Oliver, I agree. Like having these young people come to the microphone and speak to this number, these number of people with the poise that you have makes me a little jealous when I think about that. I think, oh my goodness, like it took me years and years to have the courage to be able to, to do that. And I have to say, Mr. Shea, are you still here? Look at the future of your high school. Oh, my goodness. Wait till Mr. Higgins hears about the, the future newspaper reporters that are headed to Dartmouth High School. I think that they could probably handle a podcast. I also want to know this one thing. Who came up with, oh, it's Trevor. Who's Trevor? Oh, Trevor wants to know if we want to touch a snake or pet a coyote. You do, neither. All right, and then the other favorite one of mine was sing or dance in front of the class. Those were tough, those were tough. So congratulations to Trevor. Tell him I would like to, rather than being able to fly, I would like that million dollars. So you did an amazing job. Thank you so much for sharing that. That's just so uplifting for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, thank you. That was amazing. Great job.
Do we really have to shift back to the budget?
I, I just want to say that, so that's not awkward, after this, after, after this next agenda item, I will be leaving to see my eighth grader play the spring concert at the middle school. So I'm gonna turn over this gavel to my colleague, Vice Chair, Mr. Oliver, when that happens. So, but first, I'm not gonna leave before this topic. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Seb McGuire to introduce our old business, which again is the fiscal year, the 25 proposed budget and discussion.
And again, I want to echo Mrs. Amaral. It's a tough segue from, from something that's so uplifting to where we are here. But again, we convened tonight to talk about the 2024-25 school year. I just want to stress, again, continue, and I know I'm a broken record, but I think it's important to stress the importance of the efforts that the people who came together to do this work in a way that's thoughtful. And at the end, we always have to keep coming back to recognizing the fact that every decision that we make has a person on the other end of it. We're cognizant of that. And at the end of the day, every person and every decision we make has impact on, on the experiences that our students have. At the same time, we think we've scrutinized every line item here. And Mr. Kylie's going to talk again about some of what the, I would say, highlights of, of our budget recommendations are.
Thank you, Dr. Seb McGuire. So, you know, we have presented the budget now several times. So, so I won't really go into detail. As you know, we've cut the operating budget to 3%. And we're using one point, a little more than $1.8 million of the school choice fund in fiscal year '25 to attempt to continue operating as best we can. But I do want to stress again that that is a temporary measure and that it will not be available to us long-term. Those are savings that were accumulated during the pandemic and we're spending our savings. So as we move forward with the discussions, you know, we'll continue to make sure that that's known with every board that we go before and so that no one's surprised when we come back next year or the year after and say, okay, now we're entirely out of money. We've spent all our savings and we need some help. So that's, that's what's on the horizon. Just, just so you know, following our meeting on the 11th, I forwarded the proposed budget to the town administrator and the town director of finance. I did hear back inquiring why we were over the $13,000. So what I, I let them know was that, you know, I didn't want to cut another position or split a position between school choice and the operating budget. I think that muddies the waters. I think $13,000 in the scope of, you know, more than $50 million and certainly in the, in the scope of the town's budget, more than $100 million, you know, could be solved. So that's where I left that. I'm not sure if that's gonna come up in future conversations as we move the budget forward, whether that $13,000 is gonna be an issue or not. I don't know, I hope not. We've been invited to a finance committee meeting next Thursday at 4:00 PM at Town Hall. So if, if you would like to attend or are able to attend, please let me know. Just so that we can plan and, and if we have a quorum, we will post it just in case there's any, you know, any opportunity for a discussion or...
What day of the week is that? I'm sorry?
That's next Thursday at 4:00 PM, the 4th, that's right.
Yeah, I'll plan on attending.
I'll be there.
Okay.
So what I, yeah, what I would suggest is just post it irregardless.
Okay.
If we have a quorum, we're good. If we're not, and it saves...
We can do that.
Hassles and aggravation from the, never mind, it just saves hassle.
Yeah.
What's the purpose?
Uh, the, I suppose, well, I suppose the purpose is the finance committee review of our budget request, I would imagine. They're aware that the school committee will not have voted, you won't be voting tonight, as you can't because we just had the public hearing. So they're aware that it's not an approved school committee budget at this point. So I would imagine it will be discussion regarding our, our budget request. I have not received any other information or questions from them. Obviously, we, you know, we've had a lot of discussion already, two joint meetings with the Selectment and Finance Committee. Obviously, we've sort of, I guess you could call it solved in some way, the budget problem for this year, not without a significant impact to our operation. But so, I, I don't know. I don't know what kind of discussion that's gonna be.
I don't know how much more discussion we can have.
Yeah, I wouldn't think a lot. We could talk about the future and the fact that we're going to need more funding. I'll be prepared to do that.
And if you, I would think that if you take the one, excuse me, the 1.8 and extrapolate it by 3%, you know, we're gonna need a minimum $2.1 million in '26. You know, we haven't got it.
No.
Period. You know, so somebody's gotta think about something. As far as the $13,000, yeah, that's, with all due respect, been there, done that, easy to find.
Dr. Jenkins? Yeah, you know, I just want to reference Renee and Jody's comment earlier. I have concerns about, there was a sense of urgency in January when we thought we were gonna do this, right? You know, and that it was happening, but we can't wait. I mean, you know, I'm not gonna be here, so I guess you can't wait. You know, certainly I'll be there to advocate for the schools and to help. But, you know, I started, I got involved in town service because of a budget crisis and I'm gonna leave town service during a budget crisis. And the fact of the matter is, is our tax rate is low. I'm gonna keep coming back to that. We're in the lowest 10% of all communities in the Commonwealth. People seem to think that it's gonna be one over...
People seem to think that it's going to be one override and it's going to solve the problem and we're going to be done. We're not, right? We're going to have to keep coming back to this. It's not going to be the only override. There's going to be other overrides that we're going to need. It's just a fact of life, right? When inflation is higher than 2.5%, a sort of random arbitrary number, right, we're just going to have to keep coming back to the table. And, you know, maybe we need to start approaching this, that it's not such a big deal, once in a lifetime, once every decade sort of thing, and we do smaller overrides. I don't know. But we need to have a sense of urgency because, right, we're going to start planning, before you know it, like summer's kind of a wash. People aren't around, people are on vacation, right? We need to be doing this in the fall likely in order to prepare for the next budget cycle to know what we have. So I do hope, you know, I know you will, but I hope the rest of the town boards, the select board, the finance committee feels a sense of urgency about this. We've bought some time, but we haven't bought unlimited time. And it needs to, we need to start having conversations about what the amount is, what the timing is, when these things are going to happen, because it's also a ramp up to advocating for that override that we all have to prepare for.
So I was going to say something along the same lines. One of the reasons we didn't push for an over, well, we didn't push for an override because we ended up using one-time funds to stop the gap, fill the gap. But one of the issues was how much money we needed. The first budget that was proposed back in, I think it was December, we made cuts before even presenting that budget. So then, was the override going to be already with those cuts, which that is not even services? And if we ask for an override like that, which is even services, we are actually decreasing the services. So I think what we need to do is start a subcommittee now and work through the summer, where we figure out what the schools need to be what the community wants them to be. The other reason we ditched the idea of an override in January was because there was a crunch of time, and maybe the best thing is to present to the fall town meeting our proposal, which means a lot of work in terms of having some concept about what our budget is going to be so early on, like even earlier than last year. But that way, we don't have to call for a special town meeting, which costs the town more money, and we don't have to, or we don't have to have a special town election, which costs the town more money. But that we can be very thoughtful, and we would have time to educate the community and get their feelings about what they want these schools, our schools, to be, what we want our children to have. So I propose that we start a subcommittee. And I don't know, is it just two people from school committee, or do we want to include other meetings in town?
Certainly a good question. I don't know, what are your thoughts, either Dr. Saban McGuire or Mr. Kylie, on the possibility of a subcommittee to look into the, an override? Is that something that this committee can do? Is that within our jurisdiction?
If I can speak to that. I mean, I do think certainly the budget subcommittee, it's already an approved, you know, an approved committee with, which you'll be reappointing new members at the next school committee meeting, you know, would be a great vehicle for that. If you need a special committee for this, I mean, I do think that it would be, have to be not so much focused on the campaigning for an override, because there are issues in regards to being able to do that. But in terms of who we are and what we need, yeah, I mean, that's the, I mean, that could be part of the budget subcommittee, or it could be another group, but...
But for us, it's really about the advocacy for what we believe the schools need. And I think what you said best about us educating the public as to what we need early and often is going to be important for us. And I agree, earlier, we need to start earlier than we even did this past year.
And we're working on strategic planning right now with the hopes that, you know, we'll have a strategic plan to be able to present to you in the fall. So that is good, right? That's an important element of preparing a budget, you know, a thoughtful, needs-based budget. So those things should coincide.
Thank you for your answers. So I have a couple of thoughts, just to, do you have a question?
No.
I'll come back to you. Just a couple of thoughts that I have is, if it wasn't for school choice funds, we'd be in a world of hurt right now. There's districts all around us, I'm having conversations with colleagues, that are laying off or riffing dozens of staff, and those are the districts that are local, within Bristol County, in the south coastal Massachusetts. We're lucky enough to keep our cuts to a minimum. But the reality is, next year, we're going to be in a world of hurt. If this town doesn't come together, and I'm really disappointed, this was the public budget hearing, it was advertised, that there was only, you know, some of our own staff members that got up and spoke about the concern for this budget. So I think this is going to come down to, we need to mobilize the parents. The parents in this district, in this town, really need to think about what they want to see in this district. A lot of us have moved here for the schools, and do you want them to stay the way they are? Do we want to make them better, or do we want them to regress? My daughter's graduating this year. She's had a wonderful career here in the Dartmouth Public Schools. She's going to college next year. She's doing some great things, but she's graduating. So, you know, I'm giving as much as I can over the close to 12 years now on this committee, but I think it's important that the community, the parents out there, really get the word out that we need your help. This is something that this committee cannot do alone, and this town cannot do alone, because in order to pass an override, there needs to be a lot of support within this community. So please, 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 for those of you listening at home, those of you in the audience, tell your friends, tell your family, we need you involved, we need you at these meetings, we need you at finance committee meetings, at select board meetings. If you really want to see this district continue down the road that we're on, which is, you know, right now, we're doing okay. I'd like to see us doing better. You know, we have a lot of great things happening. Our students are excelling at what they do. We saw that this evening, but we have to get the word out. So just communicate, communicate, communicate. I'd really love to see people really asking questions about what this town is going to do to support their schools. That's what I have. Any other comments, questions?
You're absolutely right, Chris. The toughest thing is getting the parents mobilized. I mean, been at this a number, a lot of times, and have sat here at meetings and said, you know, back in the early 2000s, and said, we're going to close a couple of schools if the override doesn't pass, and this is going to happen, and that's going to happen, and we still lost, and, yeah, we closed the school, you know. But these, this is all, this is all relevant and important. This is all real life, real time. So this is what, you know, it's there. And it's not, and it's not going away.
It's not. And at the end of the day, I want to put this, I want to see an override put out to the town and let the people in this town make the decision... Yeah, absolutely. ...as to what they want to see in their schools. Absolutely.
An educated decision.
An educated decision. Yes, agreed. Yep. Any other discussion?
No.
Moving on, under new business superintendent's update, Dr. Saban McGuire.
Thank you. So, I mean, it is like quite a segue, you know, between the, when I think about the beginning of this, when our DeMello students and faculty were presenting to this conversation. But at the same time, I want to, like, just focus on some of the things that really are happening right now in the district, and then hopefully talk more, a little bit more about strategic planning and why that's going to be so important to us moving forward. So as always, under teaching and learning, just going to remind folks that it's important that you know that MCAS season is upon us. It is MCAS season, and those of us out in the schools and in the field know what that means. It does make a difference for the routines in our schools. It's really important right now that families and caregivers are paying attention to messages that are coming home from the school, because they are alerting folks to what's happening and when. So we want to make sure, even if it's something as such as a student isn't feeling well and isn't going to be able to come to school, and it's an MCAS day, letting the school know that early on is really important as they prepare or plan for what we call the makeup season. So all of that is part of this whole cycle of testing that happens in our schools. But on, I've heard, you've heard me talk about Katie Poveo and the team of teachers that she's been working with to look at the literacy curriculum at the elementary school. I just want to say, we're at, at this point, she has had four different publishers out in the district presenting the curriculum resources to a team of educators from across the district. We're planning on, we're planning on continuing to add additional voices. So we want as much input as we can get from our educators out in the district, and at some point, our families as well. This is a big decision to make. And so I think we started talking about it probably back around the time we started talking about the budget. And you're going to keep hearing us talk about it, because I think it's important that folks know that it takes, or it should take, a significant amount of time to make that kind of really important investment in your community. And a literacy curriculum for our elementary children are certainly, that's an important decision for the district that could have impact, will have impact for years to come. Same thing going on again at the middle school, and I bring it up again because, again, it's an iterative process. It's not just, you don't just sit down and look at three curriculums and choose one that looks like the shiniest penny. It takes time, and we want our teachers to really engage with the content before we make those kind of decisions. I'm reminding you that as far as special education services and pre-K, we want to be sure that folks are registering children. The date for becoming part of the lottery has closed as of March 15th, but we're still, of course, paying attention to children who might be eligible for special education services through early intervention. Lori, Denisee, and Kim Redlon, as I mentioned, will be presenting about our pre-K supports at one of our April meetings. And a broken record again, remind friends and neighbors, kindergarten registration is open. Mr. Kylie and I checked in with Jen Machado today to see where we were. We're making some progress. It is important that we remind people that the sooner we know what our registration, what our enrollment is for kindergarten, the sooner we have those registrations in, the more we're going to be able to make the right decisions about making sure that we have the right support someplace for our students. So for those folks that have registered and they know their children are starting kindergarten in the fall, we are having a district-wide kindergarten showcase at the Quinn School on May 15th at 6:00 p.m. And this is an opportunity for parents, for caregivers, to hear about what they can expect for the overall experience for their children who are entering kindergarten here in Dartmouth. Once those registrations are complete, school assignments are made, then there'll be open houses in those individual schools, so that families, caregivers, students will have an opportunity to go to the schools, meet with the administrative staff, to meet with teachers, to see classrooms, et cetera. So all of that is in the works, and that will be happening, I would say, in pretty short order. So keep registering your students and keep reminding people how important that is. Mr. Kylie mentioned strategic planning, and that's directly connected to entry planning. And next month, we will be reporting out on this phase, this Thursday, from 8:30 to 11:30, we have our first district-wide strategic planning team meeting. I'm happy to say that we've expanded the number of people that are participating on that team, and we think we have a really broad group of folks that are going to be sitting around that table, that include parents, school leaders, teachers, et cetera. So if you have any suggestions about things, town officials, about people that you think maybe we missed, we're happy to hear that. We are going to be advertising that position of early childhood. I think at the last meeting, I said it was already going to have happened, but we're just making some minor adjustments to make sure that when that job ad goes out, it's really clear what the roles and, what the role and responsibilities for that, for our next director will be. Education support professionals, all levels, I know, substitute teachers, college kids are coming home soon, I know they are. I have a couple of nieces who are going to be headed home shortly, so let's get them down here to sign up to substitute teach. As far as climate and culture, we just saw a great example of it from our DeMello students, but I want to continue just commending all of the wonderful accomplishments. Last week, I, along with Mr. Oliver, who I saw there, we attended Dartmouth Finest. I came away so impressed. I think it was three hours long, and I have to tell you, it didn't see, there wasn't a down moment in the entire show, so it was really incredible. I want to say that the seniors put themselves out there in such unique and fun ways, ways that you wouldn't expect. And at the same time, I was also really impressed and inspired by the vulnerability that they showed, because it was toward the end of their show, they all got a chance to speak, and they all shared something personal that you could literally feel in the space, in the room, that their classmates, their peers, the support that they had for the students that were up on stage. A big shout out to the junior class. So we have something to look forward to, because no doubt, they were watching everything the senior class was doing, and there's a lot of competition amongst classes. I could see that, because they even talked about the class the year before. So they all want to outdo each other in a really healthy way. Stephanie Church and Julie Newman, their hard work paid off. They were here this evening, I don't know if you saw them, but they're having a screening, a Dartmouth Finest screening this evening for the students who participated in the event last week. It was just a week ago. John Nunes and Andy Christofouli, this is your week, Thursday. They're being honored by the MIAA. I know Mr. Nunes has quite a contingent of family that will be joining him to honor him for the hard work that he's done for the Dartmouth students, so we congratulate you, Mr. Nunes. I wish we could be there. I think Mr., if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Parati, I know that I wanted to talk a little, you were going to show a video, but the screen looks blank to me, but I do want to say, Mr. Parati took a group of students to NBC 10 News, which he brought, I don't know the exact number of students, but it was a pretty sizable group of students, and they got to see some of the equipment, they got to get into the studio, they had to take some really great photos of them actually sitting at the anchor desks. Do we have a video? We do. All right. I'm excited. I was going to have to do what Mrs. Correa did and keep talking. I was going to have to do what Mrs. Correa did and keep talking.